Well, good afternoon, I'm calling to order the city council budget study agenda. And starting off, we'll announce where we're calling in from, because in accordance with the emergency orders.
Sorry, nothing, that was just, my computer did, just did some craziness, sorry.
Okay, so, um, the emergency order requires us to have to, let, you know, announce where we're at. So, um, I am calling in from Oakland County in Lathrop Village, Michigan.
Bruce Kanter, Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Ian Ferguson, Palm Beach County, West Palm Beach, Florida.
And that's all we got, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Hey. Well, that must be nice, Ian.
Yeah, it's nice to see the parents, I'm feeling good about it.
Good.
Finally, after a year and a half.
Oh, that has to be great.
I know.
That's really good. Um, first up, um, discussion items is downtown development authority fiscal year 2021-22 budget. I'm assuming that, um, Ms. Suzie Steck wants to start it? No? Yes? Maybe?
Yeah, I'll start it, absolutely. So, um, the DDA met back in April to adopt their budget. We did make a few minor changes. It's overall, um, you know, it's still fairly conservative, um, numbers. Uh, we had a, a pretty solid, uh, bump in our, uh, Tifa back in nineteen twenty. Um, and that was due to the Michigan first, uh, addition. So, uh, not knowing what COVID was gonna do to the DDA budget, we, um, we kinda budgeted, like I said, fairly conservatively for, for this year at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And we've actually, at the, the board decided to increase that, um, revenue projection to, to be, uh, three hundred five thousand. And our expenditures are lined up, um, with that, that estimated, um, or anticipated revenue. There, the, the budget itself, uh, most of the items remain fairly consistent. Uh, we did balance it out with the cost share agreement that, um, we worked on in the late fall, which was adopted in January. So, all of those numbers have been incorporated into this upcoming budget. So, uh, for example, we've got, uh, Rami's code enforcement salary in there. We've got, um, we've got the, the landscaping responsibilities for the meet, for city hall, the flower beds, the, the mowing contract for six ninety-six, uh, some additional, and some additional items like, I think, we've got, but shared website costs, um, and some other things that I'm totally blanking on right now. But, so the point is that that cost share agreement and, uh, the budget numbers are now lined up. Um, we did also, um, make, we will be adopting at the, at their meeting on Friday, the same fund balance, um, policy that, that you all considered, I believe, at your last meeting. So, we're gonna adopt that policy and set aside funds specifically for the Southfield Road project, which is gonna be in twenty twenty-four. And then set aside another ninety-one and a half thousand for operating reserves. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
That was all pretty self-explanatory. Appreciate it.
Is there, um, any other, or any questions at all? No? You did a great job, Suzie, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
We're gonna move on then to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two rate schedule.
Yeah, it says that, but then the next thing in the packet is the budget.
Yeah, I think I didn't include it, although it was in your agenda packet. But that was the information that was related to the, um, commercial and residential rental, um, licensing and inspections. And it was presented to you at the last study session, but I think you wanted a comparison of current rates. And was that in the regular agenda packet? I don't recall, Suzie.
I'm looking through it right now.
It wasn't, it was in the irregular agenda packet. I'm just looking to see if it's in the study session packet.
I don't see it in, oh, yeah, I am, I don't see it in the, um, I don't see it in the study session.
Not in the study session.
I mean, that, well, yeah.
Here, I, oh. Well, um, and I know we talked about it, but, um, the, essentially, right now, um, our rental fees for commercial and residential is the exact same. There's no distinction between, um, and there's no distinction between single tenant, multi-tenant, nothing. It is a straight seventy-five dollars preoccupancy, a hundred dollars post-occupancy. Um, and those, unless I'm missing something as I read through the ordinance, those do not seem to be aligned with anything in particular, uh, related to chapter eighteen, one point, or one eight-three.
It's on page two oh two of the, uh, of the, of the regular session packet.
Two oh two?
Am I sharing the screen?
Yeah, you're sharing it. Oh, sorry, I was, I was looking up.
Two oh two, what are you looking at?
It's on the, the regular meeting packet.
Oh, okay. It is on two, well, yeah.
Yeah, two oh one, two oh two.
Okay, sorry, I'm in, I'm not in the link, let me get it.
Cheryl, can you make your screen just a smidgen, um, bigger, right at there, at, at the top? Thank you. One more, thank you.
So, I think I mentioned this in the study session the last time, um, when you first saw this is, so I looked at the, several of the surrounding communities, um, Southfield, Berkeley, Ferndale, his park, um, to, and, and then discussed again with the building official, I think he charged us seventy-five dollars an hour per inspector, per, per site visit. So, um, this was to kinda line those numbers up and, um, make sure that we're covering our inspector and administrative costs. And getting with the times, basically, and not losing money on our inspection fees.
So, one thing that I still don't see, and I'm downloading the council agenda packet for the meeting, I don't see what they were beforehand.
So Cheryl's, I saw when Cheryl was, uh, hurt, she's got it more broken out. She's kind of broken out better than I do. Mine's kind of, uh, right in there with the, uh, with that top paragraph. But Cheryl's memo, cover memo, is taken directly from the, the fee schedule as it stands.
So, it was a very, it was a more streamlined, a simpler approach that we currently had in place and that has just simply been the practice previously. Um, but when we were looking at updating our ordinances in general, we discovered that we weren't in compliance with them relative to our fee structure for landlords, essentially, for rental property. So, we've been looking at aligning what we do with what's required in the ordinance. Um, we also determined that our fees did not cover the costs. Because we're paying the contractors, um, from, um, where does he work?
McKenna.
McKenna, thank you. And so they have a set amount. And it also.
What do you pay? Sorry, I was on mute. Sorry, I was on mute. What do you pay, McKenna?
I believe it's seventy-five dollars, um, per hour, per site visit.
So, what's the proposal?
So, what's on the screen now are the current rates.
And what you, and what you're writing in your packet was, was, was the new ones with the red.
With the red are the proposed new rate.
I should have made them green for go, sorry.
Sorry, I'm looking right at it. Geez, sorry, Bruce.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm pointing out.
I'm goofy today.
It's okay, I understood what you meant, and I did it in the packet, because I was just trying to, you know, I get it.
One fifty.
So, basically, same thing that we saw, um, at our, uh, study session.
Right.
Okay, so, anyone have any questions on this one?
Well, the only variation from what, um, Suzie had drafted in her memo is that I would suggest that the new rates be effective with the start of the fiscal year of July one.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Okay. Um, so, next on the agenda is the planning and appointments.
Sorry, I had a question. The inspection trip charge was two twenty-five? It, or are you moving to two twenty-five, sorry?
I'm moving towards two twenty-five.
Yes, okay.
Did we, did we skip the budget? And the, it looks like the, the, the budget and the capital improvement plan aren't on the agenda, but are in the packet.
Yeah, I don't, um, going by the agenda, the next is the planning commission appointments.
Apparently, what I wrote on the agenda and what I had in my head didn't coincide.
Let's back up then, go into, uh, the fiscal twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget hearing. Or budget, discuss what's gonna be in the budget hearing.
Right, and, and the study session packet, that's item two B, I thought it was, and it's on page twenty-two.
Yep.
I'm on page two, two B.
It should be page twenty-two, and up in the right-hand corner is item two B.
Yep.
Okay, let's roll.
Okay. So, this is for the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which starts on July first of this year. And, um, as we had mentioned before, the, um, it's a very tight budget. And just about all of our departments, our internal departments have actually had some budget reductions. Um, but we still are running a little bit short of a little over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The, um, probably the biggest change is the reflection of the use of the bond money for the street improvements, as well as the capital improvements. If you're looking at the millet rate, the fifty, um, the twenty-one, twenty-two milit rate is projected to be twenty-four point four nine zero six. That generates approximately two point seven three million dollars. The general operating milit itself is reduced to seventeen point eight seven eight three. The increase is due to the street bond millet of three point nine, three zero seven mils, which was the voter authorized, um, street millet. And we are using a taxable value that's based on a hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. So, any questions in regards to the milit rate? Then in general fund revenues, the, um, the information we have so far from the state is that the revenue sharing payments will be decreased a little bit, about two percent. Um, the budget also reflects a decrease of, um, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and six dollars in revenue. The general fund expenditures were reduced to hundred and thirty-three thousand. But we're still, again, are reflecting the shortfall of a little over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right, but, but when we, when we finally do get the American Rescue Program funding, that should shore up most of that, correct?
It depends on how we can use it.
Right.
They've issued some rough guidelines, but they're really not specific. I would hope that we will fill most, if not all, of that gap with that funding. There is definitely a expectation that some of this is passed through. So, until we get those specifics and until you make those determinations yourselves, um, I, I can't say that specifically.
Yeah, okay.
So, based on what's being proposed, the general fund balance would be one point five million, um, is currently projected to be at one point seven million. Then in regards to other revenues, that's being reduced a little over ten thousand dollars. A good portion of that is related to the community room rentals. We were doing really well and definitely on the uptake in regards to, um, that as a revenue generator. But with the, um, the onset of the pandemic, it's definitely had a detrimental impact. We're hoping to start gearing up again. At the present time, the last I heard, we're still limited to twenty-five people within, um, that space. So, until that changes, it's not going to be a very heavily used, um, commodity here. Um, the reductions in the Lathrop Village Community Foundation is related to them paying directly for the artists as part of the summer concert. They're still supporting the summer concert, and this is their twenty-fifth anniversary. However, they'll be paying them directly, but they are, um, funding the city and DDA for a number of other projects. And we're expecting an increase in the licensing and registration because Suzie and Kelton in particular are doing an exceptional job in going after the businesses and encouraging them to participate as they should in the registration process for the business licenses. I think the last count I had was forty-five, have already registered for this year. The deadline was extended on, from March until June third, yet because of the pandemic, we did allow some additional time for them to be, um, responding, and a reminder letter will be going out shortly. So, any questions on the other revenues? And one thing I want to mention, as we're talking about the general fund, and I don't think I've even touched on it previously, is that we have been extremely fortunate, and I'll even say blessed, because we have such dedicated staff here. Uh, most, um, city halls have been closed, some are still closed to the public. You may be able to get in by appointment, but we've been open since April. Uh, we've done what we can to accommodate the residents here, because they, many do prefer to come into the office to transact business. And we've been accommodating to that and while still maintaining safeguards for our employees, as well as the residents who are here. I just wanted to take a moment to thank and applaud our staff for what they've been doing above and beyond to be accommodating to our residents.
Yeah, it's been great. They've been doing a great job.
It appears that Salim is here.
Thank you. Staff.
So, on the summary of expenditures, um, every internal department has had a reduction, as I mentioned. Um, the only exception would be for the, what we call the DPS department, and that's contracted out. And that's really the expenses for Lathrop Services, as well as some of the costs associated with our contracts, um, for the, um, the trash and leaf pickup services. And those have had expense, um, averaging about two percent increase in regards to those contracts. The capital improvement, um, initially reflected over three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in purchases and acquisitions. And looking at our budget, we, uh, I made a determination to reduce that dramat, dramatically to a little over one hundred thousand. So, a number of things that we would like to purchase, um, for this coming year, and need even to purchase, and we're simply not going to do. We'll have to push that off to a future, um, funding year of, until other funding resources are identified for those. So, any questions on the summary of expenditures?
No, I'm good, I'm good for now, thanks.
And the next page, if you're looking at page twenty-seven, it provides the comparison from what the current year to the upcoming proposed, um, budget for the, for those departments, for the general fund departments, as well as the graph identifying the, um, the changes. And you'll see on the green that most of those are a reduction from last year, so that gives you a visual interpretation of that. And the government services portion of the general fund budget, the, um, citizen communication PR, there's a slight increase. That's the line item where we have communications, such as the, um, your town publication. And with the number of projects going on, we're anticipating that we are going to have more communications. So, that was increased slightly. The training and conferences was reduced. There's so many, um, conferences now being held via Zoom, I, I'm anticipating those costs will be, um, slightly less and continue for at least the time being. And the planning consulting fee, the DDA has taken on a portion, a significant portion of those costs. And this last, this current year included the master plan consulting, so that won't be a recurring expenditure. Postage has gone up, um, the community, community center payment, so that's paying for the staff for the cleanup and setting of that. And as the revenues are declining, we're expecting that the costs for maintaining that space is also going to decline. The building inspections contract is reduced because we have brought on the full-time code enforcement, um, position. And there is only the one election this year, November twenty twenty-one, so that cost center is also reduced. Any questions?
Yeah, doesn't the, uh, postmaster have some sort of program for postage meters for cities? I thought I remembered that.
I don't know, some postmaster does. We have, um, the contract with Pitney Bowles at the present time.
You have a contract with who?
Pitney Bowles.
Okay. I figured I'd bring it up, just remember that from somewhere.
Well, we should be getting a discount with the issues we have with the local post office, because it's a different topic.
Yeah.
Separate conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, under administration, the recommendation is for a two percent salary increase for both the, um, officers, command officers, as well as administrative staff. The second sergeant position has been filled, and we are budgeted to, um, have fully staffed police department. And I see the, I had some mention before the twelve-hour shift, I'm sorry, what?
I saw you send something out. Who was the second sergeant?
Mike Tackett.
Thank you. So, we now have the two sergeants on the two shifts, two other shifts. So, that'll, that'll be very good to have that supervision, especially in the evenings. The part-time code enforcement position is lo, no longer reflected in the part-time wages. And the legal services are reduced because, um, we don't anticipate having to have as many hours with the labor attorney because we're not having contract negotiations this year. Any questions there?
And your, um, your salary increase is gonna be under general fund.
That's where it falls, if and when you approve it.
So, and I'm going somewhere with this, so, don't forget, I was supposed to send you, um, my calendar for this week. But, um, looking at my calendar for the rest of this week, I am open every evening, or like around, except tomorrow, but, uh, like around three thirty-four. Bruce, um, if you could look at your calendar and see when we can meet with Cheryl about that.
All right, well, just let me know what you guys are proposing, and I can give you dates. I mean, I, I'm not sure what dates you're, you're throwing out right now.
I'm looking at either Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of this week.
Uh, Thursday and Friday, or Thursday definitely won't work, Friday, maybe if it's late afternoon, late afternoon. And Wednesday.
Sorry, not Friday. Friday would have to be, um, before twelve.
Okay, that won't work. Uh, possibly Wednesday afternoon.
I mean, we'll, I'll send it out.
Yeah.
Hold everybody up about it.
Yeah, okay.
The marijuana open house starts at four o'clock on Wednesday, also.
Isn't that the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Well, that's next week, never mind.
Yeah.
You're talking this week, okay.
Wha, what time, what time, I was making sure I have it on my calendar, what time is the marijuana thing on the twenty-sixth?
Four to six.
Where is?
Gonna be in the community room.
Oh, that's the town hall you're talking about, sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it, yep.
Is it an open house, or is it a town hall?
Yeah.
Open house, open house.
Okay, well, what's the difference between the two?
One is going to be where, this is gonna be where that presentation is going to be, um, house, is that correct, Suzie?
Yeah, we're gonna do a brief presentation, we'll have some posters and boards. Um, we'll have like a rolling presentation, posters and boards explaining, um, what, what's going on with cannabis. I'm chilling, or working out the details, um, right now, actually, uh, without the peanut gallery. And, um, and so, we'll be working those out, and then we'll have, um, it'll remain sort of in, as an exhibit hall format, so people can come in and, and check out the information for probably another week or so afterwards.
Well, it's not where we have to be, um, you know, in, in speaker kind of thing, so, no.
No, it'd be nice to have you guys there.
Exactly, to have you there.
You know, but we, I don't anticipate some big giant panel thing, right, like, just a.
It's an open house.
An open house, make an appearance, that kind of stuff.
And when is the town hall?
Uh, no town hall planned, it's, um, public hearing.
Okay, so that was a, that was a misnomer, town hall, it's an open house.
Correct.
Okay.
Public hearing on June fifteenth.
Okay.
I'll send the doodle out, we'll be, we'll be good. We can go on to the next page.
Okay, the next one is building and grounds. The, um, the temporary salaries are projected to be reduced because we would be, um, reducing from twice a day to the once-a-day sanitizing, assuming that the standards are going to be changing as well. And the parking lot and grounds is still increased four thousand for the contracting with Southfield to sweep the, um, city hall and DPW parking lot, which is required under our MS four permit.
So, I have a question about that. They're supposed to only be at city hall and the DPW parking lot, right?
Correct, city-owned, so yes.
So, they're going down my street cleaning up. They're going down Santa Barbara cleaning up.
Probably. Probably the construction. I would, I would be surprised if it wasn't.
Yeah, I can clearly see what it is. You know I know what's going on over here.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with why they were going down there, so.
Did you get, did you get the name on the trucks?
I had it at one point, not any longer, but um, so.
They were actually cleaning, they weren't just going down the street.
No, because of the way you turn, he turned around, let me know that he was cleaning like that, that. The four-way stop, well, should be a four-way stop right there. The way he turned around, you know, how they normally clean a, a parking lot. So that's what he was doing in the um, four-way stop of Santa Barbara and La Crosse.
You got a bonus cleaning.
So, just FYI.
Okay. And I think that's it on the building and grounds.
Public safety.
My screen is frozen. Okay, public safety. So our police department is budgeted to be fully staffed. Um, there should be a corresponding reduction in overtime. The um, actual cost for the contract with the city of Berkeley for the prisoner lockup is reflected in the budget. Um, we, we, because it was a new contract, we uh, were guessing. Uh, best guesstimate of what those um, costs would be and it's coming in lower. So we have reduced that to be more reflective of our actual experience over the past two years. And the Southfield Fire and Emergency Dispatch Services contracts, which are in the regular agenda packet. Are increased both by two percent um, per year for the two-year contracts. Any questions on public safety? So we've started phase one of the sidewalk maintenance program. The um. And I want to thank Suzie and Rami um, who went out and recorded and. Marked up sidewalks and uploaded information to the GIS system um, for over two hundred properties. And so we'll be moving forward, getting that information over to Giffel so that they can formulate the RFP. For that, and if you recall, council had agreed to um, paying for the root grinding for the city trees. That might be impacting the sidewalks and the residents still remain responsible for the sidewalk slabs themselves. The contract with um, length of services is expected to remain relatively flat. I believe that we budgeted a one percent increase in their PAM. Just a slight increase, expecting that some costs might move up a little bit with them.
I had a question back on the um, the sidewalk flag placement and don't. Just yes or no on this one, Cheryl. No one else laugh, but it's a hundred and fifty dollars for each sidewalk replacement, each slab of the, okay. Cause when I've read this. You read the sentence and you tell me what you think it might, or maybe it's just me reading it at, when I'm tired. Estimates are for approximately four hundred and fifty sidewalk flag replacements at a hundred and fifty and I'm just like. Is that just about the flats?
No, yeah, uh, a side, a sidewalk block is referred to as a flag. It's called.
Thank you. That's, I'm like, uh, I really could have asked before we recorded, but I'm just gonna have to make sure. It's a hundred and fifty dollars per slab, cause I was outside counting my own slabs too, so I wanted to get an idea of what that is gonna cost me.
All right, so any questions on the public services?
Nope, we can go to recreational.
Recreation.
Recreation, recreation.
All right, uh, this is where the community room is reflected, so we're showing another reduction in the rental um. Costs there as well as community events. And as I mentioned previously, the concerts will be funded through, directly through, at least the performers through the community foundation.
So let me ask you this, and this is something that I, I know that we, you put something out about um. We're gonna continue with wearing masks and I know that it changed for being outside, um. I'm just wondering how we're gonna handle that one.
It's about a month away, a little bit more than that, so we'll see what the standards are for them. But right now, it appears if it's under one hundred people, that you're not required to wear a mask. So, one, it will depend on how many people turn out. I would anticipate it would be less than one hundred. But I was just at Greek Town this past weekend and I might be wrong.
To get out of their house and I did see the concert lineup and it looks um, pretty well, pretty good. So it could easily at some point go over a hundred and I'm thinking just as a contingency plan. Then maybe we should have something, you know, um. Something of what we, what we're gonna do. I don't know if that is putting, you know, I think uh, Chris came up with an idea in marking. Spaces before. Um, or but a mask mandate.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense, but it also, like Cheryl said, I probably, I mean, it could change five times between now and that.
But I would rather us be proactive than. So like, and we have to figure out whether or not, you know, what, you know, we can talk further about it. It's, it's just gonna be like a, um. You know, we'll, we'll talk more about it, but I just wanted to put it in your head, just in case.
Yeah, or possibly, possibly limited to residents only, or you know, there's a lot of things that we could do if we have to.
Right, and um, I know what some concert venues have started doing is having what they call pods. So you can have a group of about six people and that's, they can be in one space and then six feet from them. Can be another group of six people, so it's not necessarily every single person has to be spaced, but your, your gang can um. Be in a closer proximity to the next gathering group.
Let's talk about, you know, that and the um, limited to, you know, residents and all that good stuff. Um, just to have it um, in place for just in case nothing changes or goes worse. Is it good, always go the, the opposite way too, you know, so.
And um, I just received notification today that Randy Scott is going to have to reschedule. Because he's going on an international tour at the weekend. We have him, so we're looking for that alternate date. So everything's a little bit fluid.
Okay.
But we'll be taking all those considerations into, into our thoughts as we move forward. On the major streets. Um, for the public act fifty-one dollars, we were keeping that flat. And um, just a reminder, we're to be saving some dollars for the upcoming eleven mile project. The capital improvement street funds um, reflect the use of street bond military projects. So for things that are related to the street bond, I've shaded them like that light, it's supposed to be a brown. It looks almost green on my screen right now, but a brown, so they're easier to identify. So those are those particular line items. So we're looking to transfer in this current year approximately eight hundred thousand for projects. And then one million projected for next year under the major street fund category. And then looking at the bond interest, interest of about ninety-eight thousand. And I think you already see the communications that the bonds um, did get in the. They get a good interest rate when they were sold last week. So any. Questions in regards to the major streets? Then on the local streets, probably the biggest difference is that there will not be a transfer of funds from the major streets or the general fund. To the local fund, local street fund budget. The um, capital improvements there as well are reflected in the um, the brown shading and they're essentially half. We took the amounts that we plan on spending in each year, the current year and the upcoming year between the two funds, so you'll see the same amounts.
And it looks, it looks like the, the money in and the money out are the same, so that's good, but it basically looks like. So, so to some extent, we're kind of plugging the, the overall hole in the general fund to some extent here in the local streets by. By going into the fund balance, correct? Because it looks like um. We've got about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in normal expenses and about a hundred and seventy thousand, roughly eighty thousand in revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um. All right, yeah, that'll, that'll work this year, but the fund balance is down to ten thousand, it looks like ten thousand dollars, so we're gonna have to be a little creative for next year, I think.
But what we didn't take into consideration is the extra influx of money from the bonds because of the rates that we received. So that's not reflected in the budget at the present time, so I'm fairly confident that unless we have some exceptional cost overruns. Uh, we should be in a good shape by the end of the three-year program.
Yeah, okay.
And I say that cautiously as I saw gas at four dollars a gallon. So any questions on this um, local street funds? Then my personal favorite, the water.
Sorry.
Well, I almost understand it now after, you know, spend about twelve hours over the weekend with me. But um, so the rate is increasing about twenty-six cents. Um, to forty-three seventy-four based on one thousand units. So with the water bond interest payment, uh, we're adding to the water rate and the increase should, it should be sixteen thirty per month. Um, per. Per property. However, we're only doing the ten dollars and seventy cents per month. And some of that essentially is being offset from the um, the money that was set aside in the fund balance for capital improvements. So if you look at the chart, and I don't see the thing that I can share my page anymore. So if you look at the chart and. The current water rate is the forty-three forty-eight. And going up to the twenty-one twenty-two at forty-three seventy-four for the water. And the other items are the calculations of how the revenues and expenditures go as well as the revenue sources relative to the water. But what, I'll go ahead. What I found for me personally more helpful was to look at. The comparisons.
Up higher, yeah.
That's not the one I was looking for. This one. So I'd, I tried breaking it down. So that you could see more even the calculation of how we come up with it. Because you take the rate that is looking at one thousand, but we're like, uh, units and we're only charging one unit. We'll figure out the one unit um, price, then multiply it by four, because that's the minimum rate that anyone is going to be charged. And from that, calculating what the monthly rates are going to be that a resident could anticipate. So the current year, that would be the twenty-one thirty-two for the water. Thirty-three dollars and four cents for the sewer for a total of fifty-four thirty-six. And that includes the charge for the bill as well as um. There's another charge, the meter charge. So looking at what's coming up, that would increase to sixty-five sixty-nine. And that's the addition of the ten dollars and seventy cents for the um, capital improvement surcharge. So if you took those charges out for the meter and the capital improvement. The difference would be between fifty dollars and forty-three cents and fifty-one dollars and six cents. So that gives you a truer picture of what we're talking about in regards to the water and sewer rates. So going back to the water fund. So this was the rate schedule and how we calculated based on the costs associated with it. And then this page, and for this budget, I shaded in blue. So you can see those costs, those revenues and expenses that are associated with the um, the water capital improvement bonds. So the transfer in from the bonds, we're projecting approximately two million dollars. And then there are the corresponding expenses that you see on the lower. Chart of rev, of expenditures for the water fund. And that includes the projects for the new water meters, the water main project, stop boxes and um, lead and copper verifications. The lead and copper replacements, the water. Water main um, replacement fire hydrants and gate valves. So any questions here? And then the next page goes into the components that make up the sewer rate.
So just to um, reiterate this, which I think this is a pretty good, um, just to give people an idea. You will not, as a resident, you will not see a bill lower than sixty-five dollars.
Correct.
Okay, just to be very clear, you will not see a bill that's lower than sixty-five and sixty-nine cents.
Yes. Pam, correct me if I'm wrong. So, yes.
That, I mean, I believe that that it's, it's.
No, you're not wrong.
It's helpful to be able to see, you know, what you're budgeting for, which the expectation is for as a resident or a bill payer.
Right. And um, everyone know ha- has concerns about how their dollars are being spent, especially if they're um, their tax dollars. Or the utility bills, but considering the amount of work that we're going to have completed over a very short period of time. That some of, most of which is even required to be done.
Right.
We're really um, getting a big bang for our buck, I think.
Yeah.
I agree. It's just a fact reiterating. You will not see, see a water bill below sixty-five dollars. And you know, sixty-nine cents, I think it's just gonna be good for us to keep saying that, cause when they come out, I know that we're gonna.
Which, if I thought about it earlier, we could have included that more specifically in the your town, cause that might have been helpful.
I think we did before.
Yeah.
Twice.
We can do it for the next, for the E newsletter.
Okay.
Good idea.
And put it on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's not like we haven't been talking about it for a while now, so.
Sometimes we just forget, so we just keep reiterating that.
Yeah, oh no, I'm, I'm all for it.
Your bill will not be below sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Well, there's a couple residents who didn't even know construction was about to happen on streets until the trucks start rolling. It's not things that people have on their radar, so. Then um, the debt service. So the first two lines reflect existing bonds. And then the brownish line is the um, the payment relative, the interest payment relative to the. Is that the interest or the principal?
It's principal.
Principal payment.
Principal.
For the street bond in the blue, there is not a principal payment this first year for the water fund. There is an interest payment, however. And then the items that we identified for the um, capital acquisition expenditures. Again, those the city hall carpet replacement upstairs, the portable radios, taser and um. The mobile um, computer for the police cars. And DPS, the leafback conversion kit and the parking lot space two for the public services department. So that comes to a hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifty. And the rest is the resolution. The biggest change to the resolution was the addition of the paragraph. That references the unlimited tax general obligation bond tax levy.
And are we not putting the, we're not putting the resolution at, at this afternoon or this evening, correct? That's, that's what we're doing. That's that's what we're doing uh next week, is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, you're, so you're actually not doing the, you're not doing either public hearing tonight. The capital improvement plan is that that public hearing was already conducted by the planning commission on March sixteenth, so there's no reason to duplicate that one. Uh plus, there was no notice that went out for tonight. Uh and then the public hearing for the actual budget resolution will will have to be. A date will have to be determined. And then that one, we need a week's notice for our charter to to get that public notice out, so. That what happened was the uh the incorrect dates were on it and it didn't have the appropriate Zoom link. Um which is more than just a technical error that that we could have, could have worked through, so. Unfortunately, it it is going to require um that it be republished and and the appropriate amount of time. Prior to scheduling the next meeting, so.
Will we be act, will we will be acting on the capital improvement though uh? The tonight, right? Because the public hearing already took place by the.
Correct, yeah, we, you'll be acting on the DEA budget and the and the capital improvement, but just. About your resolution. And again, if you have a date, we can announce it during the meeting tonight so that uh. You know, those that may have tuned in for the the public hearing on the budget tonight can can be aware of the next, the next time it'll be before council.
So I can scratch it, so cross off the public hearing.
Correct, yeah, both public hearings can be crossed off for tonight.
Okay.
And we only need to reschedule the one for the.
Correct.
I'll 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 do a motion at the beginning of the meeting to correct it.
Okay, continue on.
So the actual resolution will be on. Your rescheduled meeting, once we determine that date and time.
Well, the capital improvement plan.
Now, capital group will act on that tonight.
What did you just say, though, that the? Which one?
The the public, the public hearings, we don't need either public hearing.
I know that, but Cheryl just said something different, Bruce, she said something else, you just said something that.
Your vote on the, on the city's budget will need to be rescheduled.
That, okay. I don't even see it, I mean, wait a minute, it might ask.
Is technically considered the resolution, um and what Pam has suggested is when you make the motion to approve the resolution, that you also include. In that resolution statement um motion that you're adopting the budget as presented.
They're gonna be action requests D.
Correct.
So we're taking that out also.
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you. So Bruce, you have to do that one also. Am I boring somebody? And then that will be. Okay, that'll be it. So that was. Oh, never mind, okay. Got that, Bruce?
I'm good. I gave the thumbs up, I wasn't vocal, because the dogs were still barking in the background.
I'm sorry, I was writing.
So on the capital improvement plan. And Scott, I might need you on this one. So the planning commission made a recommendation. So the council needs to receive that, but what staff is recommending is modified from that. So what there will be. Adopting will be incorporated into the budget.
Correct, so what what um what council can do is they can receive the recommendation from planning commission. Given that it's just a recommendation and given the reality that staff has, what staff has prepared in in terms of. What will be economically feasible this year. The appropriate motion would be to adopt the capital improvement plan as pr- as proposed by staff. Alternate decisions, counsel, but that would be the prudent one.
And that's um in the suggested motion on the bottom of page forty-five of the.
So that suggested motion incorporates what you, what you just said, right?
Yes. And it's my strong suggestion not to start um road projects and capital improvement projects right before the end of your fiscal year. Cause trying to divide up those costs was. Interesting. And then to have the bond attorney tell you that you have to report things to the IRS if you spend money before June first, so it's it's been an interesting week.
Hence, hence my comment last week about how it was great on the infrastructure committee to do all the strategic numbers and then turn it all over to you guys.
So, so this spreadsheet that's before you is the one that staff. Adjusted to reflect more um within our our spending allocation. And. I guess that's it for the budget. You know, we've talked about the rate fee.
Thank you.
And it looks like it's not on the, yes, it is, the planning commission appointment.
Um, so I went through all three applications. And the first one that I saw was the the strongest, I think would be. Um, pretty good to join the uh planning commission to replace uh Commissioner uh Charles. Is uh Robin Dillard, Dillard Russo. And the reason why I was looking at hers is be um one, because she has actual planning commission experience. For one, two years and for a much larger city. And, yeah, that was the one. And the second one was uh. This, the second one was, it was kind of hard, because one, I know Dawn has been involved with the uh. With us, period, on the committee and and things like that, but when I was going through um her resume. I saw that this was more of educational background. And looking at Terrence Hicks, looks more infrastructure. And um. Uh actually working in the realm of uh projects that are planned and constructed and things to that extent. So the one that I'm recommend recommending for sure is Robin. And um I'm up for discussion between Terrence and um Dawn.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know Terrence, you know, it looks like he's got good experience too, I do know Dawn, I know she, she's very sharp and she uh. You know, she did great work in the, in the, you know, Celine could talk more about it than I can, but from what I saw for the work that she did on the marijuana committee, it was very. Very thorough and uh very well thought out, so.
So, um and I, and I appreciate that um very much so, but it, when it comes to the actual planning commission, and I know how uh difficult. That is, that's why I really wanted to bring it back to uh you all, to. Yes, I was leaning more towards Terrence Hicks only because of the background um that he brings to the table too. And um, yeah. But it's, it, it, I got, I was paused because it was about. The first sentence is creating the workforce. For it, and so that's where I got a little bit, you know, that's when my pause came. Otherwise, I would have been my, the second person, but I was.
Yeah, I know them both and uh they, I mean, they're bringing um a level of professionalism, uh no matter who you select, so.
You said you know them both?
Yeah, I know them both and they both have great work ethic and um. Yeah, just have to um just kind of know who we're selecting to uh. For the specific task or um what their background is, so.
Well, I mean. Be the planning, be a planning commissioner, I'm I'm not understanding what you're saying, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, you know, whichever has a better fit, so, that's.
From what?
They're both, they're both.
I'm sorry, paper, it looks like Terrence Hicks has the the background for the planning commission.
Looks like, although, although, like you said, Kelly, one thing that I'd like, wish I knew a little bit more on is. You know, the creating the workforce for large infrastructure projects and all those other projects that he listed. You know.
Do you, any more of, uh Ian?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you know what that might mean, Ian? Was he in the workforce?
No, I I don't know what that means.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, because, because the one, the one concern I have, I mean, the the projects, you know, definitely lend themselves to planning commission type of work, but. It sounds like it could be like HR stuff.
Well, I don't know if it's HR, because then I'm looking at his card that's attached to it, it's um. Workforce development, community engagement, compliance monitoring, drone data collection, multi. You know, transportation, so it's kind of, it's a, it looks like it's kind of a catch-all and actually.
Wait, is Terrence's resume in here?
No.
No, just, 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 just see the the one statement on page fifty.
Yeah, I mean, I like that background, but yeah, I don't know what workforce. Creating the workforce means, but it does seem like he's got. Yeah, he's experienced combined with serving a statewide director opposite business development and that, I mean. He must have experience with overseeing large projects, I mean, that's what it seems like.
Well, if you go to his website, that's, that's probably even more, I love the fact he's veteran owned. You know, uh this company, um and it uh. It looks like it's all encompassing, not only helps with these uh, these plant, these projects. But also tries to get the people, the workforce for the projects also. So if you go, I don't know, I can put in the chat what the uh website is, maybe I'm doing this too deep, but I just want to make sure. I won't say what I was thinking, um just make sure we have someone.
I don't know, I like this uh, so he says he's on the, his website, this is the right one.
Yeah.
He's managed, you know, five million dollar budget, managed more than twenty nonprofit organizations. That's like community relations and public policy. I don't know, I like his background.
I would go for him.
I know who he is, okay. I just click on the pictures and then he's. Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, then my. Terrence Hicks and uh Robin. Recommend to you all, Terrence Hicks and Robin. Dillard Russo.
Those seem like good recommendations as far as to me.
Yeah, and then we can just keep Dawn's on file for if there's another, another uh opening on that board or another board.
That sounds like an absolute plan.
And we'll uh, we'll circle, we'll, we'll circle back to her, I assume, to let her know that that she wasn't chosen. So that we don't leave her in a lurch, because they were the only three that applied, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we should respond to all of them.
Don't get me wrong, her resume is quite impressive.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, she's right too, she did a lot of good, great work for us on the marijuana committee.
She did, she was really impressive on that committee.
I wonder if she was in the same class as my husband for Leadership Detroit. Okay, well, we, well, that's my recommendations for that. Anyone else, does anyone have any questions? Okay, anyone have any comments?
I got a few. Um, so I'll bring the, bring up the first one so that it'll make everybody smile, I'm gonna say the words bumper blocks. Um, and this is a question for for Scott. So there is a major uh reconstruction project, parking lot reconstruction project going on on the west. Side of Southfield Road between Cambridge and uh Califor- California Southwest. So it's basically the Plotnik CPA building, uh the KB salon, and then Fortson. So there's, there's three, three buildings there, um they basically ripped up the entire parking lot, extracted. You know, all the existing concrete and they're, they're re-asphalting, you know, all the the alleyways, as well as the front, which is, which is awesome. But that brings up the question, now that's, that's a major enough project, then I would assume that. Two of those three buildings, KB and and Fortson are ones, one, two of the, I think, four properties that did not have bumper blocks. And were also huge, were the majority of those pictures that I've been sharing over the years occur. Um, so I'm assuming that that this is something that we can now bring them into co- into compliance with code.
Yeah, that's a, that's a significant enough um improvement that they would have to bring the whole parking lot up to current standard standards.
Okay, Suzie, Cheryl, can we make sure that that happens, please?
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if Jim's already out on about it.
Yeah, okay, um so that was one. Question, just from the, from reading, reading the packet, um so I noticed in there that uh. DiMaggio Fine Art uh in the police report uh that they had seven uh false alarm uh visits. Um, do we charge, don't we charge after like the second one or something like that?
Yeah, they, they get cited, he's been cited before for excessive false alarms.
Right.
So I, and I don't know if they've issued him a new citation or not for these recent ones, but, but he has been previously cited, so.
Okay, can we follow up and see if that's happened?
Yeah, I did check with the chief on when I saw that report as well and um asked if we were following up in regards to our ability. Um to enforce it, so he did say that they are following up with those citations, I'll get more specific information.
Okay. I'll double check as well. Okay, uh thanks Scott, and thank Scots, plural. Um, and then the, the last thing, I was just curious, I know we, we've been talking about for the last couple of years about, you know, uh. Getting, going in and inspecting the buildings with the fire marshal and the code enforcer and so forth. Um, have we, I know we've done some of Jet's buildings on the, on the east side, have we done the Annulath School as part of this process?
As a matter of fact, we talked about that today, so um. Uh, last Friday, Jim uh spent a significant amount of time. Uh walking through Sernell Properties doing the inspections uh for their business licenses and commercial landlord licenses. And Rob Cockwell has asked. For Jim and Fire Marshal Albo to do an inspection of the school, so.
They, they requested it.
They requested it, he wants to know what kind of things they can do. Huh, so I'm going on a field trip whenever that date's scheduled. Because I really, I'm, I'm curious to see what they can do, too, because I don't think it's much, but. So stay tuned, I know we're not scheduling. Inspections this week, we're gonna, this is gonna be kind of like a catch up week since there's had, we've had to reschedule a few, so. Stay tuned, I'll let you know.
Related to that, that conversation, we have, I guess we'll call it a, a building and project meeting every Monday. With staff and contractors in regards to the status of various projects. And to make certain everyone has the same information and to keep things on track. So one of the things that came out of the conversation was that we have vacant buildings and we do have requirements that they register them properly. So one of the things that will follow up with the school building in particular is that they're properly registered relative to having a vacant building.
Thank you, that's all I have.
And I want to mention, you know, technology is wonderful when it works, but apparently, something happened with the agenda packet. And one of the items on the regular agenda for the M dot resolution for the grant application. For the street project, the Ted Grant. Somehow didn't get included in the packet of those in the system, so don't ask me. But anyway, I just sent you an email with a copy of the resolution and I think that the. The backup.
What, what specifically was, because I'll, I'll put that in my, in my motion to modify.
The contents weren't there.
Oh, okay, okay. So that was weird, because like, the, the agenda pack, like, some of your introductory letters were after the. The information and. It was, it was.
Moved, and I don't know why they moved. I don't know. But anyway. I just wanted to alert you that. Scott regularly let me know, he didn't see it in the packet, so that's why I sent it out by email.
So we need to put that in there where?
It's already on there, right? Yeah, it's just not in the packet.
Right. And now that I'm looking, there doesn't seem to be a link for the first Friday of the National Gun Violence Awareness, so that might be missing in the packet as well.
That was, that was one of the ones that seemed like it was all messed up, it, it, there were a lot of documents there for the gun violence, but it didn't look like they were in. They were there, but.
Yeah, something happened, I don't know what.
Yeah, I, I figured as much.
Okay. It's hard to spot check when it's three hundred and forty one pages, four hundred and thirty one.
Four hundred and thirty one.
Four hundred and thirty one pages. Okay, so you'll need to sign off and sign back on for the regular session at seven.
Is there, I know that the bat really wants to get that notice out, can, we agree on a date and time? For next week. For the budget, the special budget meeting.
Why don't we, I mean, I know that sometimes we have our Mondays are. You know, I don't know about you, I don't really have anything Monday, but.
I, I can't make it Monday. Well, Mon, yeah, next Monday wouldn't give us enough time to, to publish it, we need at least one week, and ideally. I would like to keep it in the month of May to be compliant with our charters. At least as closely as possible, so. Well, what about that Wednesday, since we've got the marijuana open house anyway, so that way we can make, you make appearances and and then have the meeting. Oh, but the meeting wouldn't be in person, it'd be via Zoom, never mind, but we could still do it via Zoom. And Ian said he thought he could make it on the twenty sixth.
Yeah, it's looking less and less that I can make it, but I'm gonna try.
I can't do the twenty sixth, I mean, after.
I'm gonna try my best, but.
You could try the thirty first, if that works, that's a Monday, still.
Thirty first is a holiday.
Oh, is a holiday.
Yeah.
So I'm.
Let's just shoot for Wednesday, I mean, let's try it.
Earlier in the day, work for people, not at all.
I can do during the day, but I cannot do Wednesday.
No.
How about Tuesday, Kelly?
I can.
Yeah, I could do, I could do Tuesday afternoon, how about you, Celine, because then we could at least have a quorum and.
Yeah, my, next week, I'm pretty open, all week, Tuesday's fine.
Let's plan it for Tuesday, Ian, can you?
Tuesday?
Yeah.
No.
The twenty fifth.
Yeah.
No, I can't make it on the twenty fifth.
You can't, but we can get a quorum on the twenty, twenty fifth.
Twenty six.
Twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth or Tuesday.
You can get a quorum on the twenty fifth?
Yeah, Kelly, myself and Celine can all make it on the twenty fifth.
Okay, I mean, if I, 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 I'm clearly saying, I, I don't think I can make it on the twenty fifth, if I have a. An opening, I will log on, you know I will, but.
Yeah.
It can be tough.
So Tuesday, the twenty fifth, at what time?
Six, work? Didn't hear you, Kelly, I saw, I saw you.
I'm sorry, my dog's barking so much going in the background, I wanted to like, let you all hear all that, so the twenty fifth is fine for me.
At, at six, what's six work?
Yes, it's six.
Yeah, that's good.
And then any other questions on any of the other general agenda items?
No, there wasn't, and I didn't.
Jill did respond, Bruce, with respect to the flags and, and. She's comfortable and confident that it's inclusive in the definition of a sign, so she wasn't recommending any additional language. Okay, just to point out, the, in, in the packet, the sign ordinance was in there three times. And the first two were not the correct versions, the third one was the correct version, so when we. Approve it in council, we need to make sure we're referencing the correct version.
Got to hear my noise now, you said the third one, which page is that, Bruce?
Hang on, let me get my book. Okay, so that's the second one, the third one, I know, it's three sixty seven was the table that I was looking at. So it starts on. Backing up here. I'll take a second, it's a long document, looks like it starts on page three fifty four. We gotta make sure we put that in the motion.
So that's the correct one on page three fifty four.
Right, what, what, I'm looking for what letter, what action item it is. G, yeah, okay. And what page did I, sorry, what page did I say, three fifty four?
Yes.
Okay.
If it helps, that one is dated five, ten, twenty one.
All right, five, ten, twenty one, all right, so I'll make that motion and I'll just. Add those, add those parameters to the motion.
So, um, it is seven o'clock, so any questions, let's hold them until.
You have a person in the audience, so.
I'm sorry, thank you, do we have a public comment, this is time for public comment. Which, yes, we, yeah, I was, no, I was on the right thing, public comment. Is there any? Sorry, you're gonna, I have a house with this right now, so I'm sorry, whatever you hear, you hear. My hands raised. Okay. We're all logged in. To the next Zoom, I'll get all this under control and then we'll be ready to. For our meeting, thanks.